I will now call to order the November 4, 2021, Clackamas County Board of Commissioners Business Meeting. Gary Schmidt, Administrator, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Chair Smith. First staff support today: Mary Bork, Clerk to the Board, Stephen Madcor, County Counsel. Roll call: Commissioner Scholl?
Here.
Commissioner Savis?
Here.
Commissioner Schrader?
Here.
Commissioner Fisher? Chair Smith?
Here. I will now lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands.
Indivisible, liberate.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everyone. We are holding this meeting in person and virtually. If you've joined us via Zoom for this meeting and are interested in providing public comment, we will prompt you regarding how to do that when the time is right. Today, we have one public hearing item, and we will take public comment for that item at that time. General public comment will be taken at the usual allotted time. As always, the public is welcome to sign up to testify. Registration for public comment will close at 5 minutes past 10. I would like to remind all participants, including staff, all elected officials, and members of the public that Robert's Rules of Orders will be enforced in this business meeting. We welcome your opinions and look forward to your polite participation. Gary, would you please introduce the first item?
Yes, our first item is a COVID-19 update. Philip Mason-Joyner, Public Health Director, will present. He is on Zoom. Go ahead, Philip.
Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. If Mary could please show the slideshow like usual, we'll get started.
Gary, I think your screen's doing something there.
Great, looks good. And if you can go to the next slide, I'll provide the weekly case count updates and death updates for the past week. In Clackamas County, we saw 663 additional cases and four deaths. In Multnomah County, a little over 1,009 deaths. And in Washington County, close to 700 cases and three deaths. The next slide is our weekly trend of cases, week by week, since the start of the pandemic. If you could go to the next slide, Mary. It shows that we did see an increase for the past reporting period. There's a couple of reasons for this. There was a delay in the state's data system getting the lab's data to us. So some of the cases that should have been in last week carried over to this week. So the number does look quite a bit higher here. There's not a specific reason I can point to, with the exception that, you know, folks are back to a lot of in-person activities. And the forecast still continues to show we're in a very jagged decline between now and the end of the calendar year. So looking at a little over halfway through this current reporting period, this week, it looks like we will see cases lower than last week. And this trend is just going to continue a few weeks where we're down and weeks where we're up. But in general, we're headed... It's still looking like we're headed in the right direction. We are seeing our active outbreaks, especially within the highest-risk settings, decrease. We are seeing school-related outbreaks right now decreasing a little bit more. And hospitalizations for COVID-positive people have been on the decline for the last few weeks, which is all positive news to see. And we'll just have to continue to monitor this as we go forward. Next slide, please. Yesterday was a big day. We did receive the official authorization to move forward with the anticipated ability to provide COVID vaccinations for individuals aged 5 to 11 years old. We did yesterday receive our first shipment of pediatric vaccines, 900 doses, that we are... Right now, the team is working to provide those vaccinations at our regular county clinics across the community, starting on Monday. So we are not ready to go today. A lot of the pharmacies and clinics that are out in the community and in our Clackamas County-specific clinics that we're providing, most of this will start early next week. We've also worked with all of our school districts across the county. That information is being provided directly to families on local opportunities at the schools in local communities through the school district. And next week, we'll be in the Malala community to serve that community first. Next slide, please. We also are very... There's a lot of demand and interest in boosters. I found this visual from the Oregon Health Authority to be really helpful. Right now, for boosters, if you're 65 and older, if you live in a high-risk setting and if you have underlying health conditions, we really want to encourage you to get the booster. They're readily available across the community. And if you received Moderna or Pfizer, you want to get that booster at least six months or later after you got your second dose. For Johnson &amp; Johnson, if you received that single-dose vaccine, you want to get that at least two months since you received your first dose. And my final slide is just to really encourage folks to hop onto our website. There are a whole lot of clinics coming up available, a lot of good information and resources on how to access a vaccine for use or if you haven't received the vaccine yet or if you're seeking a booster. Please hop onto our website for more information. And if technology is a concern, call our call center today, (503) 655-8224. We have staff available to help you get access. The other late-breaking news that happened this morning is the federal administration did... Federal OSHA did release initial rules for the federal vaccine requirement for employers that have 100 or more employees. There is a briefing at noon today. A lot of us county staff will be listening in on that briefing. We'll be talking to the state of Oregon specifically about what this will look like in Oregon as we move forward. And I hope to be able to come next... To our next business meeting next week to provide additional information on all the specifics about what we learn. But this is certainly breaking news that just hit today. And that is all I have today. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Philip. Commissioner Fisher, you have a question?
Yeah, thank you, Chair Smith. Philip, thank you for continuing to provide us the weekly report that has just a little more... A few more graphs and a little bit more detail to what's happening. I was interested in the outbreaks. There are 40% of the outbreaks that were reported on November 1st are in long-term care facilities. So I'm wondering if you could expand on that and give us a little bit of context as to what's happening with our long-term care facilities? Are the residents there that would be eligible for boosters getting them? Is there a concerted effort to do that? Are these breakthrough cases? Are they residents that aren't vaccinated? Are staff vaccinated? Just basically the big picture of what's happening in our long-term care facilities?
Yes. Outbreaks within long-term care facilities, they're high-risk settings with vulnerable populations, older adults. And everything you just listed there are the factors why. I think there's not one answer. It's all those things. And we continue to work with all of our long-term care facilities on those issues and encourage vaccines for the residents. We haven't seen the impacts of the state requirements completely for healthcare workers, but certainly some of the outbreaks have been due to staff who have had COVID and brought it into the facility. Visitors, there are loosened restrictions for visitors being able to go into those facilities. So all these factors play a part of why we've seen that setting specifically have COVID outbreaks throughout the...
Just to follow up, are boosters being actively disseminated to these long-term care facilities?
Yes. Either through the state or they have contracts with other mobile teams or through our local... Variety of different ways that these locations are receiving the boosters.
And do we have any data on vaccinated versus unvaccinated?
Specifically for residents or staff?
Yeah, that are getting COVID?
Let me talk to the team and see what I can provide for next week on that.
Okay, thank you very much. That's all I have, Chair Smith.
Any other comments for Philip? Thank you, Philip. Seeing none, go ahead, Gary.
Great, thank you. Next is a public hearing, Commissioners. You have one public hearing, and it is approval of the sale and transfer of Clackamas County's surplus property, Tax Lot 21E14CA01600, Parcel Number 05025396, to the City of West Lynn. Kathleen Rastetter, Assistant County Counsel, will present. Go ahead, please, Kathleen.
Morning, Chair Smith, Commissioners. I'm Kathleen Rastetter from County Council. And we're here today for the public hearing on the proposed sale of the property that Administrator Schmidt just identified to West Lynn. West Lynn requested that this piece of property be sold to them for a public purpose pursuant to ORS 271.330. And that statute allows the county to transfer property that it owns to a municipality for a public purpose. West Lynn is proposing to purchase the property for $943, and their proposed public purpose for the property is to construct a handicap-accessible sidewalk ramp. The statute requires us to publish notice of this hearing two weeks in advance, two consecutive weeks, which we have done, notifying the public that today is the time and place for the public comment on this proposed sale. So this is the time for the proposed... The public comment on the proposed sale. And after the hearing is closed, staff recommends that the county do approve the sale and transfer of this property to West Lynn. We've included a proposed deed in your materials as well as an aerial of the property, so you can see it's just a corner property, not very large. And the public purpose, again, is to construct a handicapped-accessible sidewalk ramp. So this is the time for public comment.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, any further questions? The presenter? I will now open a public hearing and ask if anyone wants to speak on this item. I will take in-person testimony first. Seeing none, Mary, do we have anybody on Zoom who wishes to speak to this item?
Chair, I have a list of five people, but I think when they've identified what they wanted to speak on, only one of them wrote public comment, but it was unclear.
We want public comment just on this public hearing regarding the property transfer.
Absolutely. And the attendees are allowed to... They have the option to raise their hand at this time and if they could indicate so.
Okay. I don't think they do, usually not. I will now close the public hearing on this. And I will entertain a motion.
I move we approve the sale and transfer of Clackamas County surplus property, Parcel Number 05025396, to the City of West Lynn.
Second. Commissioner Scholl has made a motion to transfer the property to West Lynn, and Commissioner Fisher has seconded the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mary, would you please call the poll?
Yes, Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you, Kathleen, for coming forward. Gary, what's next?
Thank you. Next is the consent agenda. Mary, would you please read the consent agenda?
Share that now. It's a long one today. Under 2A, elected officials. Number 1, approval of the previous business meeting minutes. 2, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Forestry for Law Enforcement Services in the Santium State Forest. Services will initially be funded through County General Funds and later reimbursed by Oregon Department of Forestry, $30,000 per fiscal year for five years for a total of $150,000. Number 3, approval of a resolution delegating limited authority to the sheriff, Angie Bradenberg, to accept a grant award through the United States Department of Justice Office of Community Oriented Policing Services online portal. Total federal award amount is $250,000, funded through the U.S. Department of Justice. No County General Funds are involved. Number 4, approval of application for grant agreement from the Oregon Department of Justice for Child Abuse Multidisciplinary Intervention Program Services. Total grant award is $1,048,512.29, funded through the state of Oregon. These are pass-through funds. No County General Funds are involved. Under B, Health, Housing, and Human Services. Number 1, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the Oregon Department of Human Services for licenses and access to the homeless management agreement is to allow the county to operate ODHS, $7,596 actual cost of licenses. No County General Funds are involved. Community... Oh, sorry, I don't mean to say community development. Under 2, approval of a subrecipient agreement with Northwest Housing Alternatives to provide homeless shelter services, funded with a HUD Emergency Solutions Grant of $58,746. No County General Funds are involved. 3, approval of a cooperation agreement with Clackamas Service Center to fund $650,000 of the $950,000 estimated construction expenses for Clackamas Services Center expansion project, funding through community development block grant. No County General Funds are involved. 4, approval of an intergovernmental agreement with the State of Oregon Department of Human Services for the Provision of Older Americans Act in Oregon Project Independence Service to Clackamas County residents aged 16 and over. Maximum agreement amount is $5,452,881, funded through federal Older American Act and state general funds with a County General... With a County General Fund match of $298,750. Approval of a contract with SRS LLC for on-call hotel rooms for temporary housing participants, maximum contract value of $582,000, funded with Metro-supported housing and service funds. No County General Funds are involved. Number 6, approval of Agreement 18944 with Ride Connect Inc. to provide $83,348 in HB 2017 funding for dedicated dialysis rides provided by social services, transportation-reaching people, funded through statewide transportation improvement funds. No County General Funds are involved. Number 7, approval of Agreement 18945 with Ride Connect Inc. to provide $85,349 in HB 2017 funding for dedicated medical rides provided by social services and transportation-reaching people, funded through statewide transportation improvement funds. No County General Funds are involved. Number 8, approval of intergovernmental agreement 171559-0 with the State of Oregon Department of Human Services for COVID-pandemic response services for Clackamas County residents aged 16 and over. Maximum agreement amount is $55,842, funded by federal Older American Act funds. No County General Funds are involved. Number 9, approval of a local subrecipient grant agreement, Amendment Number 3, with Toros Juntos for continuation of kindergarten partnership innovation services in Clackamas County. This amendment increases the total by $225,711... Oh, sorry, let me say that. $225,711 for a new maximum value of $512,052, funded through State of Oregon Kindergarten Innovation Partnership Grant. No County General Funds are involved. Under C, Community Corrections. Number 1, approval of intergovernmental agreement 6188 between the State of Oregon Department of Corrections and Clackamas County Community Corrections. This agreement provides $663,456 in funding for community correction substance abuse programs for the 2021-2023 biennium, funded through State of Oregon Measure 57 supplemental funds. No County General Funds are involved. Under 2, approval of an intergovernmental grant agreement with Oregon Health and Science University for Community Corrections to build a client database for tracking clients involved with the state-funded improvement people's access to community-based treatment, support, and services. Research partner. Total funding received will be $23,368 from the State of Oregon Criminal Justice Commission. No County General Funds are involved. Under Number 3, approval of subrecipient agreement 20-024, Amendment Number 1, between Clackamas County Community Corrections and Subrecipient Oregon Health Science University for System-Level Diversion Strategies. This amendment extends the agreement through September 30th of 2022, funded through U.S. Department of Justice. No County General Funds are involved. Under Number 4, approval of intergovernmental agreement 6153 and Biennial Plan between the State of Oregon Department of Corrections and Clackamas County Community Corrections. IGA provides $16,119... Oh, sorry, $16,119,747 grant in aid funding for community corrections program for the 2021-2023 biennium. D, Transportation and Development. Number 1, approval of Amendment 1 for Local Agency Agreement 32726-1 with the State of Oregon acting by and through its Department of Transportation for systematic signals and illumination design. Total grant amount is $252,900 with matching road funds equal to $27,455.62. No County General Funds are involved. Number 2, approval of Amendment Number 2 with Kittleson &amp; Associates for Design Services for South Ivy Street pedestrian intersection improvements. This amendment adds $372,369.54 for a total contract value of $912,225.33, funded through County Road Funds, state-funded local projects funds, and the city of Canby. No County General Funds are involved. Under E, Finance. Number 1, approval of a contract with Matt C. Westerbrook LLC for compliance and subrecipient monitoring services. Total contract value not to exceed $250,000 through November 30th, 2023, funded by cost allocations through the Finance Department budget, some of which are general funds. And that's the end of the consent agenda list at this time.
Thank you, Mary. I appreciate that. Is there any Commissioner who wishes to remove anything from this consent agenda? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second it.
The motion has been made for approval of the consent agenda by Commissioner Schrader and seconded by Commissioner Scholl. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mary, would you call the poll, please?
Yes. Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. I will now recess as the Board of County Commissioners and convene as the Development Agency. Gary?
Next is the consent agenda for the Development Agency. Mary, would you please read the consent agenda?
Yes. Release and termination of a post-closing escrow and development agreement between the Development Agency and Clackamas Corporate Park LLC. No County General Funds are involved. And that's it.
Thank you, Mary. Does any Commissioner wish to remove this item? Seeing none, I will entertain a motion.
I move for approval of the Development Agency Consent Agenda.
Second.
Commissioner Scholl has moved for the approval of the Development Agency Consent Agenda, and Commissioner Schrader has seconded that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Mary, please call the poll.
Yes. Commissioner Savis.
Aye.
Commissioner Fisher.
Aye.
Commissioner Schrader.
Aye.
Commissioner Scholl.
Aye.
Chair Smith.
Aye. Motion passes 5-0. Thank you very much. I will now adjourn as the Development Agency and reconvene as the Board of County Commissioners. Up next is public communication. This portion of the agenda shall be limited to items of county business which are properly the object of more consideration and should be nonpartisan in nature as the BCC is a nonpartisan governing body under Oregon Revised Statutes and County Code. Testimony is limited to three minutes. Comments shall be respectful and courteous to all. As a reminder, you can email submissions for public comment at bcc@clackamas.us, and these will be accepted as part of the public record. However, we will not be reading them at the business meeting due to time constraints. I will now open the meeting for public testimony and take the people in person first. I have two cards. First up is Jacqueline Arn. Please come forward, state your name, area of residence, and you have three minutes.
I am Jacqueline Arn, and I'm a resident of Clackamas County. For 31 years, I worked for Mount Hood Community College Head Start and Early Head Start. I am very concerned about the COVID shot for young children. The CEO of Pfizer says he expects... Expect's it to be safe for young children. Our bodies are 99.997% effective at healing from COVID. Young children have even a better rate. What do they need an experimental shot for? So Pfizer can make billions more on the health of our children? Some facts. Singapore has a very high vaccination rate, yet they have more cases and deaths from COVID at this time. Norway has no masks, no restrictions, no social distancing, and in the last month, they've had an average of one death a week from COVID. None. None of the shots, fact sheets, say they protect you from COVID. They don't even stop the transmission of COVID. I know of people getting COVID that are getting the variant, and they've taken two shots, and then they got the COVID. Big Pharma companies want to make billions off of COVID. In a report three days ago from CNN Business, Pfizer reported that their earnings have greatly increased thanks to its COVID-19 vaccine. Pfizer said it's expected to total $36 billion from the vaccine in 2021, and their expectation is $29 billion from the COVID vaccine in 2022. Now, instead, ivermectin has been dis- upon to use for COVID prevention. Ivermectin costs $125 to cure a case of COVID. What is not reported is in 2015, ivermectin received the Nobel Peace Prize. This was the only award for treatments of infectious diseases in 60 years. The Nobel Peace Prize honored the discovery of ivermectin as a multifaceted drug deployed against some of the world's most devastating diseases. Let's look back in history. Heroin was put in cough syrup and developed by Bayer Laboratories. We remember when tobacco was advertised as good. Doctors pushed it on TV. Cocaine was put in Coca-Cola. The CEO of Pfizer is using children as guinea pigs in their study for a virus that doesn't kill young children. So is Clackamas County going to condone using young children as test subjects to gather the data for COVID as Pfizer and companies reap billions in profit? Again, the CEO of Pfizer says there are no studies on how the COVID shot will affect young children. But his company will gather data for us.
Thank you for coming forward today. Up next, Les Poole. Thank you for coming forward today. Up next, Les Poole. Come forward, state your name, area of residence, and you have three minutes.
Good morning, Les Poole. That was an interesting presentation. I'm sure that we all are going to look at what she's just said, because it seems like we're in a world where you're one of the good guys or one of the bad guys. You're one of the people that's right, or you're one of the people that's all wrong. And there's a tremendous amount of divisiveness going on politically and socially. And of course, it's been very evident here on many occasions. But, you know, I don't know how to say that it's generated a lot of fear in people. And what I mean is a subtle fear. And they're not trusting the government with a lot of good reasons. And it's not so much the county commission here. It's the things that are coming out of the federal government, federal bureaucracies, and things that are coming out of the State of Oregon and from our governor. And if I had more time, I would speak further to that. And I'm very concerned about the manipulation of words. How come children are now called young people? Oh, it's very subtle. Doesn't mean a thing. Oh, yes, it does. And anyone that watches or hears what I've said or written on Facebook, week after week, month after month, I want to confirm something. I'm not anti-vax. And like a lot of the folks that have come in here, I'm not just somebody that hasn't been paying attention, who suddenly woke up. I think a lot of people have been watching what's going on in Oregon, especially here in the land of Metro. And they're showing up. And I do appreciate that we still have evening meetings here. Chair Smith went out of her way to create a forum where we're not all on Zoom, and we need communication, and we need, we need truth and accuracy more than ever. And one of the places that we're not getting it is from Metro. Don't have enough time to talk about Metro today, except to say this. I would extend at this time, in all sincerity, an invitation to Metro Chair Lynn Peterson to start visiting us at least once a quarter, and personally telling us what we're getting for our money, sharing with the Clackamas County residents what they're doing every Thursday in their meetings, which is affecting and changing our future with very little input from us. Thank you for your time.
That's all the cards I have for in-person today. Mary, do you have anybody online?
Yes, Chair. We have five people online, and I will call them in the order that they were received. First, we're going to start with Chris Waller. Chris, can you hear us?
Yes.
Could you please state your name and area of residence for the record, please?
Chris Waller, Jennings Lodge. Yesterday, I spent a couple of hours cleaning my chicken coop, and it brought to mind Tuesday's meeting. Chair Smith, your belittling and shouting over a fellow commissioner is degrading. True leaders, no matter their political stripe, do not publicly insult the members of their team. Your behavior doesn't just harm those you target, it harms the reputation of Clackamas County, reinforcing the idea that we are a backwards backwater that has no idea how to govern itself. What business would want to establish itself in such an atmosphere? Mucking out my chicken coop was actually more pleasant than that meeting. At least what I shoveled out from my coop actually promotes growth. Thank you.
Okay. Chair, we have Angela Nylund. Let me just do something here really quick. And Angela, can you hear us?
There we go. I got the unmute, but can you hear me?
Okay, very good. Yes, we can. If you could please state your name and area of residence?
Sure. Angela Nylund, and I'm from Boring. First, I want to thank Mr. Magcor for sending out the board rules to date, you know, the mocked-up version, and I appreciate Paul's input on that. It's good to see that process going forward. My question is, is there a date when others are going to have input into that document? And then also, what are the top, say, ten priorities of the board through the end of this year? You know, maybe it's something the public can help focus on and get completed. You know, if it's, if it's in your top ten, I'm sure it's very important to us. And, you know, we only have, what, eight Mondays till Christmas, which sounds really strange. You know, the end of year is flying up upon us. So it would be wonderful to know what our top ten goals are, and then the public can see how they can help. And thank you so much for all of your, all of your hard work. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Angela Nylund, the top ten priorities are listed on our website. We each have a copy of them here today. This is Performance Clackamas. We also have with five, five rules to follow, by the way. You mentioned we don't have rules. We have a whole bunch written down here, rules to follow. And we have ten strategic items that we voted on in January of this year that we're working toward. Thank you very much. Up next, Mary?
Yes, we have Bill Weir. Let me grab Bill. Bill, can you hear us? Please unmute yourself.
Yes, can you hear me?
You're faint. Chair, can you hear Bill?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Bill, if you could please state your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes?
Good morning, Chair Smith and Commissioners. Bill Weir, Damascus. Meeting June twenty-first, two thousand eighteen. A proclamation was presented at the beginning of the meeting.
I can't hear.
Can't hear?
Bill, can you hold on just a moment, please? I believe that this is similar to what we had last time, where it was on your end?
Yeah, I don't know. Gosh.
Let me just try speaking louder, maybe.
Speaking louder. Can you hear me now?
That's better.
That's better.
Okay. At the commission meeting, June twenty-first, two thousand eighteen, a proclamation was presented at the beginning of the meeting that was not on the agenda condemning then-President Trump's border policy. And a few lines are, quote, "We stand in solidarity with the international community to denounce the inhumane and un-American treatment of immigrants and asylum seekers who seek refuge, freedom, and fundamental human rights in the United States. President Donald J. Trump and his administration to cease and desist from unconscionable treatment of children as criminals and immediately reunify affected families," unquote. Each member of the commission then proceeded to castigate the border policy. All had emotional stories of grievance, both personal and anecdotal. One commissioner, barely containing anger, lectured us about our lack of high moral calling. One might ask, why in the world are the nonpartisan commissioners submitting this proclamation that is a federal matter, not a county issue? Commissioner Fisher quoted, quote, "I am one, but can still do something. I will not refuse the something I can do." Since President Biden took office from February through August, one hundred and twelve thousand four hundred and thirty-three children without parents were encountered after crossing the border. The data from the Department of Health and Human Services shows an additional fifteen thousand children came in September. This smashes all previous records. Exposed by the media recently were plane loads of unaccompanied underage migrants flown into suburban New York. Hundreds, mostly children with teens and some in their twenties, were whisked away into the night. Where are they going? Who's responsible? The United States estimate that seventy percent of human trafficking victims in the U.S. come from Mexico, with fifty percent of these individuals being minors. Women and children are often used for prostitution and sex trafficking, while men, men are coerced into forced labor, often by the drug cartels. Additionally, individuals traveling or migrating alone are at higher risk for trafficking. I would request that the commission, which includes three of you now holding office who signed the June eighteenth proclamation, draft a proclamation regarding President Biden's disastrous border policy and its inhumane treatment, including endangerment of children as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Up next, Mary?
Yes, Chair. Next, we have Christine Kennedy. Let me grab Christine here. Christine, if you could please unmute yourself. We should be able to hear you. If you could please state your name and area of residence, and you have three minutes.
My name is Christine Kennedy. I live in Lake Oswego. I've been a resident of Clackamas County for seven years. I retired my nursing license in February of two thousand twenty. In two thousand twenty-one, I helped out at PDX with administration of vaccines as a retired nurse. My master's degree in nursing had a leadership focus. This included strategic planning, quality improvement, financial accountability, and overall responsibility twenty-four-seven for the operation of all the medicine units at a university hospital. I was responsible to administer organizational policy on my units. In healthcare, we have a lot of things that we have to encourage people to do, and sometimes we have to have mandates. I had to do this, and the instruction from the CEO was, we were the sheriffs, and we needed to keep the peace on our units. Much of my work had to do with keeping my focus on the customer. A lot of the work had to do with who were the resources, not just money, but our human resources, and how do we work with people to create really positive change. We're sitting now with the pandemic, with the approval of vaccines for children five to eleven-year-old. And this is very exciting to move forward into this time. The issue of vaccine hesitancy is not new. As a general rule, about a third of the people are early adopters, and I'm in that group. I've seen it work. I have a great deal of trust in vaccines and the work that it takes to approve them. In this case, we also know that about a third of the parents are going to take a wait-and-see, and likely another third will be hesitant or anti-vaccine. And sadly, we've seen anti-science aggression weaponize vaccine hesitancy. It's simple and real. Science continues to demonstrate the safety and effectiveness of vaccines. I do have a concern about misinformation continues to be shared at these meetings. I wish our public health officer were present to correct information that goes out. As a concerned citizen, I encourage you all, keep your focus and energy on recovery and the healing of our county. We need it. It's really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Mary, who's up next?
Yes, Chair. We have one left. We have Anna Batista.
Who?
Anna Batista. Let me grab Anna. Anna, if you could please unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. If you could please state your name and area of residence, and then you have three minutes?
Yes, my name is Anna Batista. My area of residence is Woodburn, but my child is part of the Clackamas School District at Meridian Creek Middle School in Wilsonville, where we lived for twelve-plus years until we were blessed with being able to purchase our first home here in Woodburn, which is why we're here for now, making the daily sacrifice to continue to have my, my four children in schools in Wilsonville. I am wife to Mario Batista, and like I said, mother of four. We are a Hispanic family, and we are, I am here to talk about, the reason why I'm here is the school contacted me Thursday of last week, telling me of an alleged contact that my son, Alex, thirteen, at the middle school, had had with someone who had tested, allegedly tested positive for COVID. Now, I'd like to just briefly state that my husband and I have been so blessed to be Alex's parents. He is an excellent student, an excellent son, that has not only thrived academically, he's an excellent athlete. He has strived for straight A's throughout middle school and is, has been gifted in many regards. But sadly, last week, after I spoke with the principal at the school, I was told that he was basically being kicked out of the school, deprived of the opportunity of testing. I offered to test, because that's what his pediatric doctor tells me is the scientific proof that if there is no COVID in his body, he should be welcome in school. And if he needs to test and test negative daily, there is no reason why he shouldn't be able to return to school. The principal said, I'm sorry, that is county policy. And I, all I ask, what, please, when nearly two-thirds of our U.S. population is now vaccinated, not including or being willing to consider those with natural antibodies from having COVID already, why are we still doing this to our children? We are hurting them not only academically, but also emotionally, mentally, and physically, and I want to understand why. How can we allow the science to be ignored when it should be what, precisely what should be guiding our policy, not the other way around? Test and stay and rapid testing should be in place. I thought I was here to ask that, for your help to commit to finding out these answers, but I, I am, I am here to tell you just as excitedly as the commissioner who spoke in the beginning said about the breaking news, I too have breaking news. The CDC Director, Rochelle Walensky, is testifying as we speak before the U.S. Senate this morning with a focus on next steps in COVID and our children. The senator from New Hampshire asked for a time frame for-
Thank you very much. Anna, thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. Your three minutes is up. Mary, who's up next?
That is the end of the list, Chair.
End of the list, you betcha. Okay. Commissioner Fisher?
Yeah, Chair Smith. Last week, was it last week, that Philip gave us an update on tests to stay, that everybody's on board, trying to work out all of the details, that there isn't controversy about that, that there's-
About what?
About tests to stay, so that kids are not sent home. I don't-
I, I don't want to repeat something just based on memory. Gary, do you recall that?
Sorry, I don't.
Okay. So I'm, my question is that at least for next, next week, if we could just put in a request to get an update on the status of test to stay, so that children that are potentially exposed to COVID don't have to leave school.
Gary made a note of that.
Yeah, thank you so much. I just don't want to lose that follow-up. Thank you.
Yeah. We've heard, we've been hearing a lot lately about vaccination of children. There's a lot of information, a lot of stories, a lot of doctors are weighing in. And based on, you know, the two people today that talked about it, it is really an issue that's hitting a lot of people with, in their hearts and heads with good reason. Okay, Gary. I will now close the public communication portion of this meeting. We'll move on. Gary, you're up.
Thank you, Chair Smith. Next is county administrator update. I'd like to share good news happening here at Clackamas County. This week, I'd like to share some great words of recognition our transportation and development staff received. Marty, who lives in Jennings Lodge, wrote, Ashley, he wrote about some tree branches that were hanging too far out over county roads in the Jennings Lodge area that were impacting his RV every time he 'd drive by. After sending his email request to our Transportation Maintenance Division, our staff sent an inspector to look out at the issue, found the trouble spots. Our staff went and took care of the work. And five days after the original request, the problem was solved. Marty wrote back to us, Dear Clackamas County Transportation Maintenance Team, thank you so much for getting to the obstructive tree branches so quickly. I am very impressed by your responsiveness and attention to detail. Please thank the supervisor and his field crews for me. If I knew how, I would stop by with a couple dozen fresh donuts for the team. Well, you can come by right now, Marty. We're here to- No, kidding. So thank you, Marty, for that very, very kind note, and to our Transportation Operations Supervisor Ricardo, Ricardo Sandoval, for his work and his team's work on getting this done in short order.
Thank you.
Very similar to all the great work we do at Clackamas County. Finally, Commissioners, due to the Veterans Day holiday, your business meeting next week will be held on Wednesday instead of Thursday. It will be an evening business meeting, so it is Wednesday, November ten, at six p.m. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Gary. Up next is Commissioner Communication. I think first on the list is Commissioner Fisher.
Yeah, thank you, Chair Smith. First of all, I want to just thank everybody that came to testify today. And I see that Jacqueline is still in the audience, an audience of two. I am, was very interested in your testimony, and I tried to write down, you talked very fast, and I couldn't get all of the numbers that I wanted to. Would you mind emailing that to me?
I'd be glad to.
I would really appreciate that.
Yeah, it was current CNN information in the last three days.
Okay. So, so, so thank- So, thank, so thank you for that. I really do appreciate the input that we receive. It's very good for us as leaders to hear from our constituents and to help us formulate where we need to focus and what we need to be working on, especially, really appreciated last night. And I think I can speak for all of us when I say that our Public Safety Town Hall was pretty enlightening, very beneficial. The statistics of the increased crime is a concern for all of us, and the dedication that was so obvious from our leaders, from our sheriff, from our police chiefs, from our district attorney, about working, really leaning in to the challenges, not shying away from them, but doing the best we can in collaboration with, with each other for the benefit of our community. That was, that was a pretty inspiring evening, really am thankful for that today. It's carrying me through with a, with a whole lot of hope. And also, I just want to thank Gary Schmidt, Stephen Madcor, and my colleagues. I really appreciated, see, we had an hour retreat that was, got some new information about our colleagues, good direction in moving forward. I'm feeling hopeful about how we are going to proceed. And while I appreciate Angela holding us to task for our 10 things. So, we do have our Performance Clackamas, which I know we're all very, very proud of. And I have to say, if you look at this, we've made some pretty excellent progress on this, already this year, with more to come, and I think it's, we probably do, before the end of the year, need to take some time just to kind of pat this commission on the back because it's been a very challenging time. As Les Poole, in his testimony, Public Communications stated, "There is a serious divide. We're in the middle of a pandemic. The issues that we deal with are very challenging." And despite all of that, we're building a courthouse, we're continuing to build housing that's more affordable. We just went through and did a big change to our ZDOs to incentivize more affordable housing development. We continue to make progress on our Climate Action Plan, which is well underway, and we continue to problem-solve, think, and work towards public safety for our community. And the other piece that I am just so thankful for, and I think this is a real testament to the consensus points of this board, is how we care about growing a vibrant economy. We have cared deeply about our businesses all through this pandemic, have kept them front and center. We understand that small businesses are the foundation and bedrock of our, a driver for our economic engine, and we have really focused there. So, Angela, thank you for asking the question and for holding us accountable to the things that we need to be working on. And I am looking forward to finishing off this year and continuing into the next. Thank you, Chair Smith.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. Up next, Commissioner Scholl.
Yes, good morning, Clackamas County. For those of you who track on our forestry assets, in the month of November, the Oregon Department of Forestry is holding a 30-day public comment period to review the ODF's North Cascade District Plan for the Sandy Am Forest, a portion of which lies in Clackamas County. And you can see the plan on the ODF Sandy Am State Forestry Recovery website. On Health Services, thank you to Mary Rumbow for briefing me last week on peer-delivered services and telepsychiatry offered by the Clackamas Behavioral Health Division. They have programs that include all ages, including early childhood, that are successful at helping with mental health and addiction recovery. The need for these services is growing in the county, even among our children. Confidentiality is always maintained, and if you or a loved one need more information, find it at the clackamas.us/behavioralhealth. I'd like to thank Anna Batista who called in. In fact, I want to thank all of our callers this morning, and to Jacqueline Arn and Les Poole for coming in and speaking today. But to Anna Batista who called in about school quarantines. I've received other calls from parents who are concerned about school quarantines due to COVID exposure. And currently, Oregon Health Authority states that if a student is unvaccinated and is exposed to COVID, a 10-day school quarantine is required, even if the student tests negative and has no symptoms present. But if the student is vaccinated, no quarantine is required unless symptoms are present. Quarantines are causing parents and students in the county hardship, and parents tell me mental health issues with the kids. And I've been asked if the Clackamas County Board of Commissioners could change the Oregon Health Authority's mandate, and hensers no, unfortunately. Parents need to work through their state rep and the school board, OHA, Oregon Department of Education, to raise community complaints against the quarantine issue. Now, on the test and stay, at this time, it's not being done due to limits on test kits, staffing for testing, and funding. And that's from Philip Mason-Joiner as of the day before yesterday. You can find out more on this at clackamas.us/coronavirus-school-information. And on the public town hall, thank you again, Dylan Blaylock, for an excellent town hall last night on public safety. If you missed the town hall last night, you can see it on the county website. And for those of you who called in or emailed a question, your question will be staffed, and you will get an answer back on the issue you brought up. On the Climate Action Plan, as many of you know, the state has required counties to produce a climate action plan. Residents and businesses need to be aware of how this is progressing, although you're going to get many opportunities to influence the development of the Climate Action Plan in Clackamas County through focus groups, surveys, community meetings. The next meeting of the Community Advisory Task Force will be on Zoom, be 18 November at 1:00 PM. You can find that on the Clackamas County website also. One other comment about Climate Action Plan, and this is attaboy for the people of Clackamas County in Oregon. Since emissions per capita and by unit of GDP have been declining for over 20 years in our state, it's clear that Oregonians have been doing their part to live and maintain a clean environment. Here's a question for you. Should Oregon veer away from regulations and carbon tax and instead concentrate on bottom-up approaches that harness the natural tendency of entrepreneurs and innovators to identify more efficient and cost-effective ways of producing goods and services? It's a question that you need to be asking yourself. Your input may decide the outcome. Please make your opinion heard. Read more at clackamas.us/sustainability. And one last little reminder, I'm going to remind you every week. If you are not up on ODOT's plan that they're working on for tolling and congestion pricing, you need to be knowledgeable on it and see the ODOT website and also the Vehicle Transportation Alliance on Facebook. And don't miss the one December Town Hall here at the county. And that's all I have, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Scholl. Commissioner Schrader, you're up.
Well, thank you, Chair Smith. I want to make a few comments. I attended yesterday a meeting with Greater Portland Inc., Metro, and basically, those are, they were folks working together to pull together our comprehensive economic development strategy for the entire region. It is a document now, it's online, and what is the purpose of that? It's a strategy-driven plan for regional economic development, designed to build business capacity and actually help us be prosperous as a region with our business community. So, it's a quite extensive plan. I was glad to be part of the conversation as we moved forward with that. It enables us regionally to obtain dollars from the Department of Commerce for projects that are actually pulling together to build business capacity here in the region. So, that was actually very, very, for me, very rewarding. I think it's something that it's necessary. I think that as we move through the pandemic, that we can't forget our businesses. And I'm also very proud to say that we, I think, Clackamas County has done a very good job locally funneling dollars to businesses through our chambers of commerce to help them really move through the crisis, many crises we've dealt here between the pandemic and wildfires and ice storms. I want to congratulate Christine Lewis, our counselor here from Metro. She is now the new chair of the LOX Commission. So, she'll be leading us through the process as we move from a LOX Commission to an authority. And I'm very glad I'll still be able to serve on it. I was, I was flattered that they did ask me first if I wanted to be the chair, and I just felt that it was time to get some new, new young blood in there, folks, who are, are going to be here for a while. And so, I'm going to look forward to working with Christine on that issue. The other thing I wanted to do today is talk a little bit about our nonprofits. I think we should really try and showcase them as much as we can. As I attended the meeting yesterday with all of you on public safety, it became clear that we have a lot of nonprofits in this county that are working with us to keep our public safe and secure. And I recently, I think Commissioner Savis will, will back me up on this, had a conversation with Northwest Family Services, and they are a great nonprofit. One of the issues we're dealing with as a county is that when state funding gets cut to some of our nonprofits, their programs are put in jeopardy. And one of the programs right now that's in jeopardy is PreventNet. And PreventNet was a program that our own Rod Cook helped institute a number of years ago, and it really works directly with our, our school systems across the county, dealing with youth, keeping them in school, and keeping them interested, making sure they're getting all the services they need. So, as we move forward, I hope that we can continue to work with our nonprofits to help them figure out what could be other potential funding streams for them. We don't have the general fund. As you know, we have very little discretionary dollars. But I'm hopeful that this will have a larger conversation of how all of them can get together to maybe solve what could be a funding crisis for them. And again, largely, it's because cuts occur at the state level and the federal level. And, and then what are we going to do when the expectation is to backfill when we have very few discretionary dollars? So, that's something I've been thinking a lot about, and hopefully, we can pull together some kind of a coalition to have further discussions about that. So, that's it for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Schrader. Up next is Commissioner Savis.
Thank you. I did want to talk a little bit about today, about transparency, public involvement. And I was kind of taken back recently with some, a lot of folks, because of COVID, our meetings, our public meetings, our advisory committees are, you know, not as, I think, as robust. I'm hearing from a lot of folks, and somewhat detached when we were, when we were working online and meeting online. We don't have that personal connection, and things just aren't as easy, I guess. And communication is somewhat compromised in these settings. And there's a natural piece of that, you know, when we talk to one another in person, there is that human connection. It's more powerful than talking to one another either on the phone typically, which I always didn't really have a lot of pleasure in, and really dislike dealing with people face-to-face and, and having those kinds of discussions. But all to say, I, I think that really now more than ever, because things are less transparent, I think we need to try to be more transparent. And that's going to be very difficult to do. We've, I think we all anticipated a year ago that maybe we would be out of this COVID or out of these electronic meetings, more so than we are today. We're making our advances, but there is certainly a large need right now for more transparency. And I, and I, I think that with the politics increasing, it seems, it seems that the fever pitch currently of, of politics is, is so high that there is a lot of information out there that is really not information. It's, it's really, it's really disinformation in so many areas. I'm not really talking about one area in particular, but it certainly heightens, and I think it also takes people's energy away when they, when they become disheartened, or they feel they're not effective, or they're not heard, or they're disconnected from their leaders, whether it's county, city, school districts, across the board. I do want to touch a little bit, last night in our town hall on public safety, some great statistics were shared. The Sheriff Brandon Berg shared some of the areas where crimes increased by certain percentages. You know, I think a lot of us has seen that. But the good news is, I, I think that some of those serious crimes are not taking place here in Clackamas like they are to our neighbors of the north here in, in Portland and Multnomah County. So, we're fortunate that way. Also appreciated the district attorney's comments about, you know, his efforts and passion about, you know, equity. And so, the statistics about how people are in this county, how people are prosecuted, and that our numbers are actually demonstrating that we're actually a very fair county. There's no mistreatment. There's no, there's no indication where anyone, color of anyone's skin, or their status as far as whether they speak a certain language, or, or their immigration, or so forth. But I just got the sense from him that we're, we're doing a pretty good job. That's good to hear. The other issue I wanted to talk about, I haven't really shared this with my colleagues, this is a small one. It's actually a good news story. So, one of the good news stories is that several years ago, it came to my attention that there were a lot, number of accidents on Highway 211 between Colton and Malala. And so, I start working with the community and start working with the state police and ODOT and a number of agencies pre-COVID, because this is, this is years ago. And as we were ramping up, basically, once there, once a certain area has a certain amount of car accidents and deaths, unfortunately, deaths are, are one of the bigger significant things that are, is a metric towards whether or not you qualify. So, we worked hard. I worked with members of the community, met with fire, emergency responders. I met with, again, the, the local state police director here, and working with ODOT, and just announced here, just knowing it was coming, that, that, that project's been green-lighted, and I'm, and it's really underway currently. So, there is, is a safety corridor being established, and I'm going to drive out there this weekend and see if there's any signs up and start meeting with folks to make sure what's happening. But basically, essentially, it is, I think there's really a, a posting and a policing effort, both hopefully with our local Clackamas County Sheriff, most especially the state police, to make sure they patrol that area, because so much speeding and accidents have happened. And even people that have, that we know here have had car rollovers and accidents right in their front yards on Highway 211. So, I was pleased to announce, even though these things take a lot of time, but that, that project is, is moving forward. So, I want to thank ODOT. I want to thank the state police. I want to thank our staff that worked on that, the community members who brought that to our attention, our emergency responders, everyone involved. We're doing our best to maintain safety and on our transportation facilities. Kudos to all, and we'll see you next week.
Thank you very much, Commissioner Savis. I want to piggyback on some of the comments made earlier regarding our town hall last night on public safety. I think you can view that online. Anybody who has an interest in what our district attorney is doing as far as prosecutions and what the sheriff is doing as far as arrest, patrol, and our jail, take a look at that. We had so much energy going. I just sat back and hardly made any comments, and I really was in awe. We're going to, as Paul was saying, the district attorney brought forward, I think, some very encouraging statistics regarding equity and race and what the assumptions are. some very encouraging statistics regarding equity and race and what the assumptions are, and maybe dispelled some of those assumptions. We're going to be working on a press statement for him to get the word out more on it, because I really was impressed by how that went. Our PGA Director Sue Hildick has reached out to DA Wentworth, and he is very happy to accommodate that. And it's just, I think people will be very pleased. I think people will be happy that they voted for a 12-cent increase for this effort. We had a land use hearing this week, we call them ZDOs, and it's to change some housing opportunities in Clackamas County to allow for more affordable housing, more housing along our main corridors, maybe a land that's not currently being utilized. We are moving on to phase two of that. I think it's a big land use change, and as our county increases and grows, it's just more housing opportunities for those, and hopefully, that in turn will free up our single-family residences. I want to restate that next week's evening business meeting will be on Wednesday. So if you show up on Thursday, the doors will be locked because it's Veterans Day, so it's on Wednesday. Again, there's a lot of talk about tolling. The town hall, virtual town hall, online, Zoom, December 1st on tolling. I hope everybody can, who is interested in the topic, will show up. I'm sure there will be a robust discussion on that. This commission passed this summer a transportation value statement regarding tolling and the care and expansion of our roadways in our county. I suggest everybody take a look at that. That is also on our, our website, I believe, Gary. I'm not sure exactly where, but it's there. If anybody's having trouble with that, just notify our office, we'll help you locate that. That's all I have today. Thank you for all attending, and this meeting is adjourned.